Any public discussion on any item on this agenda? Do you want to deviate from the agenda and go ahead with Mike so he can get one buddy's rat killer?
You can just filter through. I think that's the highlighted copy. We're just going to repeat the process twice if you guys don't mind. Otherwise, I can leave her set of copies. I think there's just one spot that requires for all three signatures for their documents, if I remember right.
I just need the national lease.
I'm just asking for a copy of the minutes, that page.
This is me perky off at day contract, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I said.
We used Sourcewell.
Did we give it the 60 or 72?
72, that's what you told me you liked, so that's why I had her draw it up.
My thinking on that is if times are good, there's money, make two payments. And then when we go through some harder times, we can drop back. It makes the payments a lot smaller if you give 72 or 73. But you don't want to pay this thing over 70. You want double payments in good times. Do I need to be signing these?
Yeah. There's, let's find the sheet, there's one spot that asks for all three, this one. I think this is the one that I want. And everybody's kind of done it different. I've done these docs with other commissioners and all three of them signed on the same page, but it really, I think this page is the only one that actually calls for all three signature. These are shadowed. And if you all three want to sign on every page underneath them, I'm fine with you. Whatever you want to do.
We're going to have to prove our mistake.
One page, we'll see the, there is one page for the DA to sign off on. I would say I care, but... The opinion of counsel, this page is for the DA to sign off on. Is that not Brian Mitchell anymore?
He's over at town. Alva.
I know last time we were here, you guys were...
Yeah, he's kind of comes back and forth, but Whistling was actually upstairs.
Okay, I don't think them's in order, but...
It doesn't matter, I carry those. They always get butchered. Every time I even try to keep them in order, so I quit trying. I just want to keep the two separate so I don't end up with two of them together and that way I know I've got the full set. I'll let you go through and do it again.
Might do a little more. Now this one don't have any yellow.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't highlight both copies. I decided it last minute because I remembered last time I only brought one copy and then I had to get her set back. But it was still Cap Financial last time, so it was all, that's a process. Once I get them signed, they get them fully executed, we have to send them to Nashville and Cap Finance finishes off. Puts their signing seal on it and then sends them back.
It's not highlighted, but that's RW. Oh, the 8038G.
This is the one with 2G. And then what do we sign here?
Discount, it's the 8038G, it's coming out tonight and it's just...
It's up here too, I just...
Our tax exemption.
Might as well do this one too, while you're there, maybe we'll just do that again, please.
That's the first page, it's on the second page.
Should be...
Two pages there. Sorry. Getting better at this every time. Usually, the first couple of times, I wasn't even sure if I got all my paperwork back. And then here's the settlement, and I brought two copies of it. Well, this is just for me.
I want to tell you a story real fast. The state just bought one just exactly like this, they just delivered it out here. The guys wanted me to go look at it.
You mean the highway department got one?
No.
No, the federal.
The Salt Plains Wildlife Department.
Oh, I'm thinking of the highway.
The federal ones, I'm sorry, the federal ones. So the guys take me out there and show it to me. And we're on our way back town, so they tell me, on the way back town, they say, now these joysticks, they've got all these buttons and stuff all over, and you can make these buttons do anything, answer your phone, I mean, anything you want. So they're telling me, now, we're going to set this thing up for each one of us. When we put our code in it, it'll do exactly how we've got it set up for us. And they said, then we'll have a guest code. And I said, well, I want you to do the guest code for me, so when I go out there, I can run it. And they said, on guest code, we're going to make it where every button only honks the horn. I said, okay, guys, if we're going to play the game this way. So then we're telling him that, and he said, no, what you need to do is you need to set my code up so that any button I push just starts turning it around and around and extending the button just to clear out everything around. And then after, I tear up everything around and take a picture and say, poker for commissioner.
That's the word.
But, but you have to call me and let me know when you're going to run it, because I would want to be there to see it. Now, they have, to be honest with you, Cap is, our excavators have a ton of new technology on them. Most of which these guys will never use. So when I went to Peoria last year, they said, oh, this is what we're introducing and putting, essentially, we're putting 2D technology on all of our excavators, but they're not charging more for it. Because if they change the monitor, you can give her that copy if she wants for her, and then I'll take that one to sign it. Because it's really not hardware, it's not a whole lot of hardware. We already had a monitor in it, it's got an 8-inch, like the machine you bought, it's going to have an 8-inch tablet screen. And it's pretty easy to monitor and set up, which we'll walk through when we deliver the machine. We'll help him set up all of his user profiles, because you can go in, put every operator's own user profile. So if he likes backhoe controls instead of excavator controls, it'll be set to what he likes when he puts his... That just gives me your travel time and mileage, that's for me. I don't know if you have to have this, but I have to have it. It's just for me to get the travel time and mileage approved for the governmental, it's more on my side. You're welcome to look copy it. I've got that, that covers me. If you, I can go up and get, with the DA, get the assignment and I'll bring on your copy by?
I don't know what they had going on up there, but she was walking down the stairs when I was going upstairs, so I'm like, if she's up there, so...
But that's it, that's all I have.
You'll give me a copy?
Yep, sure.
Do what? I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next week, after they sign the minutes, I'll just email them to you.
Perfect, that'd be great. That's for you, that's just a list of the filters. I already emailed it to him, he has it, but if you want to put it in a file in an office.
That'd be soon.
We'll have it. We're making the machine ready, should have the thumb maybe by the end of the week.
Cool, take a week to put it on.
Yeah, it shouldn't, but a couple of days, and then we'll go through and... There's a lot of calibrations to that, because it has the weights. So since on that machine, you could actually weigh, not that you guys ever would, but if you ever needed to track, if you're wanting to weigh like at the pit, if you want to make sure your trucks have 16 tons on them, I mean, he could essentially do. Our excavators will have the weight scales on them. So that has a way to basically tell you how much weight you're putting on, and operator can track what he's putting on a truck.
See, what was happening to me too was when the base, it was raining in bed, I had my trucks hauling material into the yard, they loaded them down at the pit. And when my guys loaded them out of the yard to take them out to spot them, they loaded half again as much on them as they loaded, they were counting that as loads, and the next thing I knew, I was way too early on material.
The old loading coming out of the yard.
All of a sudden, they were loading you at the pit. Uh-uh, I had to have a visit, but yeah, see how that could change your end of work, right?
It has some bells and whistles, it's not necessarily something that you guys will use, but it is on there, which, I mean, theoretically, at the end of the day, it's an advantage on the selling point. I mean, it doesn't affect the counting a lot, but it still could be very useful. Put 10 horns across the road, I mean, you can set a grade on that and it'll hold the grade. So if your guy's trying to dig a flat bottom ditch for 100 yards...
And they consider it to be working around the high line.
Yeah, and they can set parameters, you can set parameters on it, so where the dome won't lift past a certain amount of feet if they are in a tight area, and you don't want your operator to get into the high line wires or inside of a building that he has a certain reach on.
They're shutting all that off.
Probably, I mean, I understand that most people don't need that stuff, but...
They just don't let me do that, you ain't.
That's what they're telling me.
I'll go upstairs and get this done. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And as you guys know, I'll be seeing you soon, and we'll set up the demo day when, on delivery, all in all, kind of...
We need to get some different color paint, some John Deere details.
I don't think so. People are going to be like, what is that, now found the Canadians? Aliens have invaded. I'll go upstairs and get this done, though.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you. Oh, standing right in front of me. That's all right, it's... They won't see much of me standing in front of it.
I'm going to reset them in.
Say.
I want to be right behind you. Yeah, I told him to handle that picture, and they were handling it for a long period of time. Our picture was much more attractive than that.
I thought so too. I wait till I see it, thanks, Jack.
I want to tell you his response to that.
I love it.
Got you?
Got it.
All right. Thank you very much.
If you need anything else, shoot me up, I'll call.
I'll do that, I'll get this done, I'll get this emailed to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day, tomorrow.
See ya.
Take it easy.
Thank you.
Jake, take care.
Yeah, thank you.
Call me if I can help. See you, Bonnie.
Bye.
Is this that new trailer?
Is it?
I think so.
No, no, that's... Over this chair.
Ah, so this is the... What's in there?
Yeah, please.
You guys don't treat them neutral. So was the guy texting or what was he doing, and they didn't sign?
Was the guy not paying attention that rear ended?
What?
Yes, the guy that rear ended, was he not paying attention?
Yeah, he wasn't.
The law wouldn't watch him hurt either, was he? My knees, he yells and screams, don't worry.
Well, Shane, our driver, saw it. He warned Marvin before it happened, he's like, they're not slowing down. But our driver was actually looking in the mirror, and he noticed, he knew it was going to happen before he saw.
That's a good thing they were a little bit prepared.
I think by the time Mar still said, what?
They're not slowing down, dude.
Never mind.
You like your calendar, I got it, there's officers talking, man, and he lied. And he said, why don't you give her the ticket over there? She's the one who tells me how to drive, I just got to hold it in the steering wheel. I think that's a good, isn't it?
I know how it is in my car. Second time I opened my mouth, brakes come on full tilt, and I wound up driving.
I want you to learn to keep your mouth shut, don't you, Joe?
He don't hate things. Guess I can work up there too.
Hello? Yeah. Okay, I'll get word to them, I'm in the commissioner meeting right now, but I'll call them soon as I get out. That's not a problem. Oh, thank you. Get disconnected from the little building there, okay, that's fine. We'll get after it.
I'll see you later.
All right, bye. Call them, please.
All right.
Aye. Aye. Blanket birthday door.
They'll take the checks all the way, so if you can, let them know it's checked. They're supposed to make the... Each one's a child. This one's a three. Did you say four also, I'm sorry, what's happening? Just one, two, and three. One, two, three.
I'll make the motion, just don't...
We got some more.
Oh, we got more?
Yeah, just some more.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Hit them. All the dumbest.
I was trying to get them wrong, please. It's all right, we'll be done next time. Get an air in my room, give it.
You're on a roll, and now you're off.
We had high lines, or crazy high lines that we were supposed to take out for the school out there, and you better call away and think of getting out that high line. We're not gonna take it out in there now. He gets going, he says, "He was gonna drop the line."
The top ones, County General, the bottom ones are sheriffs. Don't sign the sheriffs, just the top one. Yep, that's it.
That's it.
Don't sign the other one.
You already made the motion?
I'll make the motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Road crossing, I mean, I didn't want to do the...
Oh.
It should be a habit.
You did the same too, that we should have had you last week, with the present on the agenda, so.
Oh. I got these, just change this to a two.
Two? I've got a one.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Court, court, grant that you may manage one of the preservation muster before it gets in the game.
This is a special account that we had to make up. It's for, the statute is for four years, and so, of course, when they do that, they don't think the process all the way through of how you need to do it. So, um, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Um, it took us a while to get the account set up, and then she has to send you guys, kind of like a monthly officer, report on it, and there's just one spot, there's three of them there, one spot for Chairman to sign, and that is just her report on each one of those. It's $100 a month. It took her a while before she could, I can't relate much to spend it on.
I'm gonna need a check here.
Second.
Report.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for disposing equipment for DCC2, armor-like trailer, serial number XXXX.
Yep.
Did you bring another, the original one, or just some of these, or is it original?
Yeah, it's in my big, in my big empty bag.
I made a copy there, we can just send that through, I just didn't...
Yeah, I brought it with me, I didn't bring it.
You'll need to sign that.
I'm starting to carry my bag up, I really don't need that.
I don't need it. But it signed about where your finger is there also. Nope, no, not that one, never mind, sorry, that's a second step.
There.
It's a, that's a second step, so it doesn't need to be signed.
Okay.
I was thinking first step.
I'll make the motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for disposing equipment in the fairground, 2013, on your tractor.
Okay.
I'm gonna pick you night up today, and bring him today, so I'll tell him so this morning, I think.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I need payroll before you guys leave on Thursday.
You never seen business, I move with urine.
I'll second that one.
All right, all in favor?